Okay, good evening and welcome to the Eastline Board of Selectmen regular meeting for March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. All those that can, please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any additional agenda or consent items? What I'd like to do is when we get into the business, move item three A, the EV charging stations, up to ahead of everything else because they have a representative here. Is any objections to that?
No.
None? Okay. Delegations, there's anyone that would like to address the board? Mr. Harney, name and address and please.
For the record, my name is Stephen Harney. I reside at two zero seven Clarendon Avenue in Southport, North Carolina. I'm here tonight to speak as a representative and advisor to Hathaway Farm LLC and English Harbor Capital Partners and Portside Holdings, Inc., which are two partners of Hathaway Farm LLC. I happen to be traveling up here for business. I appreciate you letting me get in front of you. I know you've had various things on your executive agenda, executive session agenda, but I'm here just to speak on behalf of Hathaway. It has really nothing to do with the Osagachi Hills piece. I was called to be interviewed by Elizabeth Regan at The Day recently and read the articles last week, or more importantly, the one that pertained to the land trust and the Attorney General. I traveled up here on some personal business, so I thought I would at least come and address your board, as it appears that there's a lot of misinformation out there related to this project. For the life of me, I'll never figure out why this is so difficult, but it is your number one preservation piece and has been for 20 years. For the record, I've been personally instrumental in protecting about 700 acres of land in your town since I moved away eight years ago. If my math is right, the town has only put up $350,000 toward these 700 acres. Based on reading these articles, you would think we were Al Capone as opposed to people trying to protect and preserve your number one preservation piece. I also believe that as much as you go into your executive sessions, I think most of your executive sessions are in violation of the FOIA statute as it relates to executive session. If you'll allow me to give you this, this is really what the rules are in executive session and what the matters are. I would hope that you guys would understand those, because I think several of you are basically transvestite. I'm not voying myself, so. Most of the matters, I think, you've had a discussion really aren't addressed at all and what the purpose of executive session is. You'll just bear with me, because I did have a discussion yesterday with Attorney Novak, who's representing the Eastline Land Trust. I was made aware of, and we have been aware for some time, of different people reaching out to the Attorney General, which we certainly have no problem in because there's full transparency on this and we always intended there to be. But as you guys may recall, about 18 months ago, the land trust held a meeting at the community center. It was about the proposed acquisition of the Hathaway Farms property. Several of you, I believe, attended it. I think, as you all know, it is the number one and has been for over 20 years, the primary piece to be protected and preserved. That was nothing we made up. That was your land of unique value study, your open space vision plan and the like. It never was the town where the land trust approached about acquiring the entire property. There was always carve-outs on that property. I know I've heard certain things about what was done or the field goals keep being moved, but that was never the case. The original land grant application to DEEP had all the carve-outs. Whether you know or not, we purchased that all cash, no contingencies, and had an A-2 survey done after the fact, and as much as we all thought it was 152 acres, it turned out to be about 15 acres less. And at that point, I don't believe the town was ever approached to buy it. The town was approached to participate in an opportunity to protect and preserve your number one piece. So you could have just said no, right, Kevin? You could have said no, and if you wanted to participate, it was totally up to you how much money you wanted to do. Somehow, this thing got all spun out of control. Because we had an opportunity to sell it to a developer that wanted to pursue a subdivision in affordable housing. My recommendation back then and still now is it should be protected and preserved. There's plenty of other land to develop and there are, well, surely it won't be your number one piece. The question is, what happens to it? Is it protected or preserved, or does it get developed? I think you're all aware the land trust got a $400,000 grant. That's what prompted them to approach you, to see if you wanted to participate. There were numerous appraisals done on the property. I think here we extended your contract, the contract with the Eastline Land Trust, a couple of times, just to give them a chance they either raise money or at least get an answer from the town and if they wanted to participate. And although I wasn't involved in that, there was overtures made or suggestions that they might use some of the American Rescue money or go into the open space account. I wasn't privy to any of that. I know there were appraisals done for the lender. I think the value came in and I don't know if it was shared with you or not of $2.2 million. I know the town engaged the services of an appraiser. As I recall, I had approached Kevin about having the appraisers meet to go over the and at least agree on what they were going to do, what they were going to value, of which that was never done. I find it interesting that we sold 10 acres to an abutting property owner. There could only be one building lot based on the frontage they got, and they paid $650,000 for it. My understanding, although I've never seen it, that the town and their appraiser valued 115 acres, somewhere in the vicinity of close to that price, I believe, Kevin, although we've never seen the appraisal. I think I was party to a letter, let me see here, dated December fourteenth, from your current counsel on this, Attorney Block. I'm actually surprised he can even represent the town, because Attorney Block and his law firm were the court-appointed committee to the Hathaway.
Steve, we have a five-minute, and you're only up to over eight minutes, so if you could just start wrapping it up.
You want to wrap it up, Kevin?
Your comments.
Okay, I'll wrap it up.
I mean, there's no one behind you, so I'm just telling you where we are.
Yes, sir. This is more for your benefit than mine. December fourteenth, although it wasn't sent to me, it was sent to the attorney for the land trust, although it makes references to we as mortgage holders, to forbear while, I think it states the town's interested in this. It could be wrapped up in 60 days. There was a lot of other conditions that, quite frankly, I was shocked to see in there because I wasn't a party to the letter. It was a little discouraging to see the town attorney do that, least of which I questioned whether Attorney Block really is conflicted in this because he represented the courts, signed the deed for the LLC that I had a contract with, received the proceeds of the mortgage that's on the property. Yeah, I'm not quite sure, but that's for you and Attorney Block to determine. What I also found a little discouraging was in the article from Elizabeth Regan, it was stated, I think it's a quote from you, Kevin, that lawyers are going to hash this out. I also see Attorney Block commenting that he hasn't spoken with Attorney Novak since the date of the letter, December fourteenth. So my question is, from December fourteenth to March fourteenth, 90 days, he states in his letter, 60 days to do this, asks us not to speak to anybody, which we didn't. So my question is, how can you hash anything out if nobody communicates? Me, as a representative of the lenders, I don't have a lawyer. You want to hash something out, call me up. But to sit here and put in a newspaper that lawyers are going to hash it out and your own attorney never contacted the Eastline Land Trust attorney for 90 days, do you think that's good faith? I really question that. So once again, certain things are going to happen because the Eastline Land Trust mortgage is at maturity. You guys are welcome to buy our mortgage if you want. Or I don't know where this whole thing is going to go. I suppose you're welcome to go to a foreclosure auction if you want for Osagachi Hills. But really, what I recommend is start dealing in good faith, or just answer the question. Are you interested in participating in the opportunity to protect and preserve your number one piece? If the answer is no, that's fine. We'll move the ball down the road. And if it's yes, do me a favor, all you people, right? Come to the table in good faith. If you don't want it, we don't care. But I'm getting tired of painted and the talk I hear, like I say, I've worked feverishly to protect and preserve 700 acres in your town. Insinuations I get, the articles, they just don't fit what we're doing. So either say no or thank us in the Eastline Land Trust for trying to protect some of your land. For the life of me, I can't figure out, you guys will go talk to Landmark Bank, chase him around, try and get a $10 million bond from the state, pay the guy, what, $20, $30 million for 200 acres? You take my current appraisal, it's $16,000 an acre. It makes that land worth $3 million, three and a half million, not 10, not 20, not 30, right? It's a great open space shakeout, as I would call it. But these deals, you know, Kevin, you had the opportunity to get that Osagachi Hills piece and the Hathaway piece for somewhere around $2.5 million. Four, $5 million are at the land, right? My understanding from the land trust is 2011 through your past first selectman for me giving the trust for public land, they offered the Hathaway family $4 million for that piece. 12 years ago, in the middle of a real estate recession, $4 million. So I don't get it. I'll never get it. There should have been a collaboration, not you guys sneaking behind and calling the Attorney General and trying to figure out. This deal is 100% transparent. There's nothing wrong here at all. What's really wrong is your guys' behavior, so I'm disappointed. I was the chairman of the Board of Finance with Bill Weber, eight years I spent in this town, right? Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Anyone else like to address the board? Okay, see none. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes when I did the agenda, because I had to do it last week and I left off the special meeting minutes, so we have to do both of those, so my apologies for leaving those off.
Okay, move to approve the regular meeting minutes of the Board of Selectmen of March first, 2023. Second.
Okay, it's moving second. Any comments or corrections? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, carried unanimously. It's moving on.
Okay, move to approve the special meeting minutes of March first, 2023 of the Board of Selectmen.
Sure, second.
Second.
Any comments or corrections? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried unanimously. Move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes, move to approve the consent calendar for the regular meeting of March 15, 2023 in the amount of $29,434.21.
Oh, second.
Okay, it's moved to the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, carried unanimously. Alex, come on up. EV stations, we've done this before, so.
Yeah. For the record, Alex Close, town engineer, here to talk about the EV chargers and request action on the Hope Street and Methodist Street parking lots.
Just to interrupt Alex, Alex will be leaving on the 24th, is his last day. He will be called active duty to serve his country for the next nine months, so we wish you the best and we're here to support your family if they ever need any help.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Excellent. Thank you, Kevin. So the proposal that you have in front of you now is really no different than the proposal that was presented for review and discussion without action. The difference is, speaking with first selectman and the finance director, talking about whether the consultant ESC is willing to take onus of the cost that the rebate would actually be funding, which removes some liability to actually fund the entire project in the town and puts that liability on the contractor. The representatives are here with us today and they were willing to do that, which is really a substantial help to the town and the town's financing options. So what that means is the bottom line that we discussed last time was about $15,000 is going to be needed to put these two charging stations in. $15,000 is still needed. What that removes is the sum, nine, close to $80,000 total contract price does not need to be funded by the town and then reimbursed. Instead, we will only need to request the funds for the $15,000. I can get into my letter in response to some of our general questions as well, but I wanted to give you the bottom line upfront of what we're talking about today. What we're saying is that for $15,000, we could install the chargers, one charger with two ports in Hope Street and one in the Methodist Street, town-owned parking lots, that would both be separately metered. By Eversource, we would get a rate agreement with them and they would be completely owned and operated by the town through the meter, just like we have our, any of our other utility bills. We get the bill and we can set up charges to the customers. There's all kinds of different software options that we've discussed many times when I've come before you. Of that $15,000, $4,972.50 would need to be paid directly to ESC for their services, and again, the rest of their services would be covered in the rebate. And the remainder of that, which would be just a little over $10,000 that I'm requesting in the motion, would be used towards the end of construction to cover some site construction items that are not covered by ESC, which are really on Methodist Street. There's some, there's a concrete sidewalk there. When we put the chargers in, we're going to have to do some work to restore some of that concrete. There may be some paving involved and some minor site items cleanup work that needs to be done in order to make sure that once the chargers are in, that the parking spaces are, they've been designed to be accessible and just making sure any cleanup work from the construction is covered. And I believe that the $10,000 is appropriate to cover that work with our on-call contractors. So that's where the total of $15,000 comes from. So the motion, does everyone have a copy in front of them of the request? Andy, do you have an extra copy? If you need it, I could read it. I'm sorry, I don't have a copy in front of me, but let's now talk about, please, before I formally request this, if you have any questions of my letter that I had sent, I think I captured everybody's questions from the last time I was in front of you. And I had sent a letter that hopefully addresses all the questions about, to the best of my ability, right, this is still pretty new stuff, so there's only so much data out there. Some towns have had chargers for quite some time with an old CTD program. Those may be 11 years ago, but they had to provide that electricity for free and now they're converting those to be charging. But for most people, the chargers are still new, so I can't predict the future, but I did my best. I spoke with, I don't know, must have been seven to nine towns altogether on the shoreline that I think fits the kind of geographic position, size, general demographic of the people of Eastline to the best of my ability and how, what their experience has been. Did some research on the number of electric vehicles and hopefully addressed any of your other concerns, and the overall feedback was pretty positive, essentially saying that, again, we can't predict the future, but the belief is that this would be a good investment from what I'm hearing from the other towns that have installed these or are looking to install these under a similar process. Do you have any further questions?
Any questions for Ann?
Yeah, I think we had talked a bit about insurance and I think for Kevin Gervais, I don't know if you had gotten any information from Kirma about insuring these.
We did.
Okay, so.
If you're going to respond, Kevin, you're going to have to, I can grab a microphone.
I was told I'm not allowed to sing.
She's great in karaoke screens.
Right? I'm sorry, what was the original question?
Yeah, Kirma.
It's about the Kirma and the coverage that we would need to cover these assets that
I believe it was a rider policy or something to that effect. We have to sign a piece of paper. It didn't appear it had that much financial impact on the overall, you know, our lap package, so I don't believe there was a significant impact on this.
So who within the town is going to administer the operations of these EV stations? Like when they, you know, when someone sticks the card in and it's not working?
Running the program. So from what I've heard pretty much unanimously is that these chargers are unbelievably self-sufficient and they have not degraded, even some of the ones that were installed back in 2008, 2011 are operating like the day they were installed. Some of them have been retrofitted to add card readers. Most have just installed new ones because it's more expensive to retrofit, but the new ones with the card readers as well.
Are better.
The program is unbelievably self-sufficient and reliable, is the feedback I'm getting. And keep in mind, there's a networking fee that covers us for five years, and if there's any IT end of this, that's something that is actually covered by the network agent that is, there's going to be a SIM card in these devices that use a wireless internet service, basically, and there is part of our package and part of this total cost would be a five-year network agreement. That's basically, if there's any sort of technological issue, that's completely covered by the service provider. It's not something that we have to go in there and try to fix ourselves, even though we do own the equipment. It's part of that network process. As far as collecting funds, because it would be a revenue fund account, to work with finance directly to, I don't want to speak for finance, but imagine set up some sort of account where we can put that revenue, but that's really getting into the finance side and something I imagine we would address with Board of Finance in terms of how, you know, where does the money go from the collection? I can't really speak to that.
Or what, who decides what we charge?
Right. As far as rate setting goes, I don't.
I think that would probably be, once we decide to move forward, we'll, could ask town council for a policy on that, see what other towns have done too, once we get to that point. I didn't want to ask town attorney for that because they asked me about that and I said, I don't want to spend the money on that if we're not going to do it.
So I think other towns, it's typically set up through the finance office and the Board of Finance is what I've seen. I'm not saying that's what we have to do, but from what I've seen from other towns, the Board of Finance was directly involved with both the collection and the setting of the rates. That's what I've seen with the other towns that I spoke with.
Okay. Another question, just on future costs, like down the road, like let's say we're, you know, after the five years, our networking fees, you know, will have to be renewed or, I mean, I'm thinking about renewals and what's this looking like?
We will have to continue to renew the networking fee. The current networking fee is. The current networking fee, not the activation fee, but the network fee is 5,000, and I don't, it is five years, yes? Good for five years, so it's five. Okay, so $5,000 for five years. I can't make promises on inflation, but I can't imagine we would be outside of the realm of, you know, close to $5,000 in the future. Some of the things that we are doing to future-proof would be the addition of the extra conduits off of the meter now, which means that the construction costs for any future chargers would be substantially less because the infrastructure's in place, the meter's in place and the conduits are there. We're going to stub conduits in Hope Street off of the grass and on Methodist Street, we're actually going to remove the bricks, stub the conduits, cap them and lay the bricks on top of them. So there, we could also just remove the bricks that buffer and pull the lines and install the chargers right there in the future with substantially less construction costs. So we could always invest in future chargers if the town and the board decides it's something they want to do based on how the program goes, but the networking fee will most likely have to be renewed in five years and it's 5,000 for five years. I can't imagine it would be, can't make any promises, but I can't imagine it would be that much different for some reason.
Talk about your fee structure and deal with it that way. Okay, yeah, because those are just some questions that when you wrote, when you wrote your letter to us in response to the questions, I was sure that some of those were actually, you know, covered. Okay, and so, well, my colleagues ask other questions, but I, will come back to me because I had some issues with respect to the structure of the contract, you know, with the parts of the contract, but we'll come back to that.
Yeah, and what I'm, I get, what I'm requesting today is that the board would consider the allocation of these funds, because we need that to move forward to Board Finance and then we need that to move to a town meeting and these things take time and prices increase. If there are any contract-specific discussions that are not going to affect that bottom line, I, step in and correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm not, I don't think we're actually requesting to say that this is the final contract. I'm saying that if for some reason that final dollar amount isn't what we're discussing today, then this thing's out the window and we got to come back and start over.
Not so much, yeah, not, not the finances, but just some other structural issues with that, so.
So that's definitely something that we can look at.
We can amend your motion.
And I just.
Okay.
I do feel that we have to request this action today because with the cost of everything and the time that the consultant has put in for us pro bono, which I understood they're trying to get the work, but they have been very good with us. I want to respect that as well. They have a reputation with working other towns successfully. And, but yeah, then the last kind of thing I guess I'll just say is, the 824 I don't think should be understated. I don't wanna seem like the champion, the martyr, the poster child for this. This is brought before you, really, it's in our P O C D. So my job is, as a town engineer, is simply to look at the areas that the town has already identified that they said that they're interested in investing and trying to figure out how to make that happen. So the P O C D has identified electric vehicle charging, and that's why we got a unanimous approval on the 824. I, I just, I, I can't make any promises on the ROI or anything like that. All I can say is, the town, through their natural government processes, have said that they're interested in electric vehicle charging. And so this is, in my opinion, the best I could get, right? Working with a couple of different contractors and this, this funding opportunity is an extremely high amount of coverage. You know, we're talking $40,000 per site. I don't know if we're gonna see that again. So whether we get that return, I'm not sure. Whether this is really just a commodity versus a revenue, you know, money-making piece, I'm not sure. It's just something the town, in their documents, have identified. So I think this is the best, the best we can do with our current resources, if that makes sense.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Alex.
So Alex, while you're on leave, who's going to be in charge of this project? Okay, I hope you're taking it over. Now, so my understanding is, never having used these, and unfortunately, I don't have a Tesla or any one of those vehicles, but there's no cash involved. You're gonna, you're gonna either use a credit card or a debit card.
Is that correct? Yes, that is correct.
So there won't be any cash on site, which would be temptation for someone to. Okay?
And does it support a mobile app and a credit card?
So, no, there's no credit card scanner.
Come on.
You have to come, you have to come up and, yeah.
No, that's okay. I, I just wanna make sure I'm completely answering your question, so I might as well include how the charging process actually functions to help answer your questions.
Sure, so there's, there's two, two forms. There's an RFID card, which this particular charger, you can use sort of a large swath of them. So even if they're another brand, they can be used on this brand. Or there's an app. So they can either go up and swipe the card, or they can go into their app. It's either way.
Is this a special card that one subscribes to, or is it anybody's, any regular credit card?
No, it's not a credit card. It's an RFID card. Which most people with electric vehicles will have one or another.
That's, that's something people get, yeah. If you have.
And they keep it on their keychain or their wallet, and it's something that they swipe.
I would anticipate most people to.
Alex.
I would anticipate most people would probably use an application on their phone. But if they don't have a smartphone, then there is another ability for you to pay, but cash is not an option.
This is an RFID here. It's just, it keeps, it's, it's got a bunch of information and stuff.
And it might have appeared in the earlier document. Where frankly, with the whole budget process, we're a little bit overwhelmed with the paperwork, totally. But, now I lost my train of thought. Somebody else, come back to me.
Other, other comments?
The question I have, which I think at this point, we're too far downstream. It's like I said, and we talked about this, about the two stations being 0.4 miles apart. And I think it's probably too late now to identify a different location that's further away.
Yeah, I mean, the, the two locations were picked, one, because they're municipally-owned parking lots. And they're completely owned and operated by the town with no strings attached to them whatsoever. And also for the fact that they're in the downtown Niantic. I mean, quite frankly, that they're close to, next to the 161 corridor in the Flanders Four Corners area. It's our biggest commercial generating area where people are most frequently parking. There's a shared parking overlay district there that zoning monitors very closely how they manage parking there to make sure that doesn't get too overwhelmed or too underwhelmed. So that's why they're there, is the proximity to the, to the, to the businesses, to the boardwalk, to the two beaches versus another area in town. We looked at the feasibility of putting them in, let's say, Hole in the Wall, but we actually felt that limiting those two spaces, that would be required for an electric vehicle in Hole in the Wall, we just simply don't have the capacity to do that. And so that's why the, they were just the right distance away from the beach in the downtown, but also close enough that you can park your car for a few hours and go walk and shop and do what you need to do. That's really why those two locations were considered kind of irrelevant to their distance. The reason that we didn't put multiple chargers in the one lot is those are two separate lots, which means two separate funding sources. If we put all the chargers just in Hope or just in Methodist, we would only get one pot. We would only be looking at $40,000. Now we're looking at $80,000 because they're two separate properties, two separate parking lots.
Yeah, that's a step to the next. Understand that. Nice, I just, that was my only question about, about location. I think any of the other things that are gonna be happening, the insurance will cover any kind of damage that's done. We talked about that in the past. That was my other concern. If it got hit by a car or whatever else, I don't think any of that's gonna be a, I mean, it's just gonna be like everything else in town. If damage is done, damage will be fixed. Insurance will pay for it. So that's the only questions I had.
Other questions?
You should see our streetlights.
Okay.
Those are pretty expensive.
Roseanne?
I think that you might have presented it earlier, but do, how many electric vehicles do we have in town?
Uh, I'm sorry, I don't have my own letter in front of me, so I apologize. But I have the number, if you have that letter in front of you, that has exactly how many are in town.
You have to come up and tell us, yeah.
So, yeah, as, as if, I think it was July, I put the number in the letter. I apologize if I don't have it. I was running all over it.
Hello, so according to DEEP, there is.
You can introduce yourself.
Oh, Thomas Kenny, Energy Solution Sales Specialist at E A C. So currently, this is on DEEP's website. I can send it to Alex. East Line, 206.
Is that as of when?
Uh, this, hold on.
I think it's July, right?
2022.
Yeah, July.
July 2022.
Yeah, so that's the number that I put in the.
Okay.
So then we would surmise that the busiest time is gonna be during the summer when we have a lot of tourists and things that will boost this number.
Yeah, it's a great way for you to promote tourism, utilizing EV chargers. You can use it in town marketing and different avenues as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
That's not the number you put in here. You put 189.
Oh, maybe, maybe it was updated since I, I got my information from DEEP as well. So originally, I tried the assessor's office, but unfortunately, the way we code vehicles, like a Mustang, there's also the electric version, and they make no differential on the assessors. So it was not possible to get that metric specific from the assessors. So I, I just had to do some online research, basically.
All right, no other comments? Alex, thank you for, I mean, not only the work getting this to us, but to keep the project openness long and for them to offer the, help us out as far as not having to obligate all the money upfront, even though it gets rebated, we do have to, you know, obligate it.
Right.
We hate to see that kind of, and not, and also the information about the vandalism in other towns. You were telling me how, what town they were free, now that they start charging, people got upset, but they're still using them.
Yeah, I think it was, it was Guilford that was under the original program. They have one near their town hall and near a large, like, park, basically. They have some shops, but they started charging. And some people naturally wrote in and said, you know, why are we charging? And maybe there was like a stop the, you know, town from charging money. But at the end of the day, from, from this correspondence I had, people still showed up and paid for electricity and kept using that. Maybe it was down a little bit, but it, it happened.
And the fact that I was at a council government meeting today, and one of the things they're talking about is going green. And, you know, this is gonna be something that at some point in time, we, there may not be a choice. You're gonna have to have these receptacles and that. And here again, we've done it, you know, I think it's something that, you know, makes sense right now to not only help members of our community, but people come as well. If not, we'll take a motion. And also to just, you know, the 32, the count that ends in 719, Kevin, explain what count that is? Because you didn't, you don't have that in there.
So, oh, sorry.
Yes, you, I wasn't talking to myself.
I thought you were gonna keep talking there. So, so hold on here, let me just pull it up.
Just so you know what it is.
The 01 account is banned maturity fees. So we're not going out, we're not rolling the bonds until August. So that'll be next year's issue. So we have $29,333. I know you're not spending all of it. But, so we have a little bit of cash there. And then the account it's going into is named EV charging stations.
Oh, okay, so you're setting up.
So those are banned maturity fees and EV charging stations. The name of those two accounts.
To account, not from account.
It should be, yes.
It's going to the 32 account.
Yeah.
Yes, so to account, okay. And then just my, my, my last issue before I read a motion is just with the contractual cleanup, just a little, you know, housekeeping on the contract. So when, like, this motion again is to move the project forward.
Right.
However, I mean, I.
So this is to allocate the funds. I do believe that the contractual cleanup that you're concerned with is gonna change the bottom dollar.
Oh, I don't think it, it will.
Right, so it has to go here? And presuming we're okay to be on the 23rd, right?
Yep.
Yeah, well, I'll explain that in a minute.
Okay, well, to answer your question, we still have to go to Board of Finance, and then we have to do a town meeting.
Okay.
Next, the April meeting has to have a town meeting. So between then and the, between then and the town meeting, if you can get your feedback.
Well, Alex, if I can, if we approve this tonight prior to going to, we can have that reviewed by Town Attorney.
Okay, perfect. That's what I would hope, is we could get it before we're in front of you again at the town meeting.
The concerns don't affect the bottom line, the financials. It's more just a structural issue.
That's all we're talking about today then.
Okay.
All right, so move to approve. No other, everyone's all set up. Move to approve a special appropriation in the amount of $15,000 to account 32-30-400-700-719, transferred from account 01-50-522-620-600. Of this $15,000, $4,972.50 will be paid to ESC upon acceptance of a contract between the town of East Line, executed by the First Selectman Kevin Siri and ESC. The remainder of the funds, $10,027.50, will be used for site construction items not covered in ESC's proposal, mostly concrete and paving work for the parking areas, and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. Note, this requires a town meeting.
So second?
Second.
And seconded? All those in favor? Eddie for comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, abstentions? Carrie, just say, just so you know, the Board of Finance has a special meeting on the 23rd. And if they, we're gonna put this on the agenda so we can get this to a town meeting, so we can get this moving a little quicker. If that's approved at Board of Finance, we will, what we're gonna do, we'll post it ahead of time, so it's already posted. On the morning of the, or sometime on the 24th, a special Board of Selectment meeting, Zoom, so we can just do the call to the town meeting. So it'll be on, in April. So that's how that'll happen. So anyway, so, okay, thank you so much, Alex. Thank you, thank you so much for your help and so forth within the project.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no, we're here. So Board of Finance meeting on Thursday? Okay, moving on, we'll go back to discussion. One of the things I thought, you know, coming forward, we, I wanted to, we talked about the, you do some of the additional American Rescue Plan monies. And what I did is I did some looking, and based on expenditures that are currently, there's $53,642 available from projects that closed out less than the approved amount. On that document you got, you should have been able to see them. It's a little hard to read, but, but they're in there. And then we also had set aside $75,000 in contingency for emergency management pandemic needs. Alex, Alex, can you move out in there? Yeah, thank you.
Can I, Kevin, can I just cut you off for one quick second?
Yes.
The number, so the closed-out figure is $53,642.
Yes.
The money available for new projects, $51,848. It was just read the wrong line.
Okay.
So that was it. So $2,000 less, but I won't lead you to it.
So anyway, so, you know, this, you know, do we wanna consider, you know, this is a very, you know, challenging budget year coming up. Kevin will have some good news, very good news from our aspect on the current year's budget coming out a little later on. But I just thought, is this something we wanted to sit and consider using some of this to address items possibly, probably? I don't wanna, nothing salary-wise or personnel-wise, or something that'd be one-time, which we would probably consider, yeah, consider.
We know how, how we think.
Considering, consider possibly, I know there's a couple of requests. There's a request for some lawnmowers and stuff like that, and those are things we would not bond. This is the cash, so this would be an actual, you know, reduction in the, and here again, obviously, you have to get Town Council to give their okay on using it that. So if that, what I could do for possibly the next meeting is develop a few projects and identify where the money would come from and move forward with this. Because, you know, I know, you know, and I think as far as like the nonprofits and so forth like that, 501Cs, I think that one has already come, and, you know, we took care of them, you know, and it's now a year down the road. So I think we're okay in that area. But I'd just like to get the, the rest of the board's input before we move forward with this.
Yeah, if we, if we can, if you can, if we can earmark or identify projects that directly impact the budget.
Definitely.
That would be, that would be beneficial to all.
Well, I think too, you know, I'm thinking something that's a one-time, because here again, a lawnmower, that's gonna, that's gonna be gone for a lot of years. Those will last 15 years.
I'm just saying, as long as we keep the scope within the scope of the budget, we don't say, oh, you know, we also would like to go and buy a whatever. I think if, if, if we come back with, with things that directly affect the budget, then that's a win-win.
Okay, I'd be glad to get something together for the next meeting so we can discuss that a little bit more.
Could you just refresh us as to what is not applicable to the money to be used for?
It has to be something like Parks and Rec type of stuff would, would be covered by it. And the thing is, I hate, Ann would be in a better position to answer that, but, because it kept getting more and more liberal as time went on. So I, I mean, I think we could possibly consider using some of it for some of the work in, in the building here. But here again, we were planning on bonding the ADA money, so that, I don't know if that would really apply to it. But we could probably use a small part of some of the smaller projects for that.
Wouldn't it be better to not have to go out to bonding and have the expense of that?
But, but just the first round of bonding would be about $175,000. It would wipe out all the, and then we'd still have to go to bond for that. So I'm thinking of things that we have a need for right now that would, would be able to, you know, take out of the budget.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, you know, smaller items, you know, that we can use cash for within the budget as, as Bill suggested, you know, absolutely. And the second set of treasury regulations is where we had this explosion in possible projects, that, things that would qualify. And basically, it's, it's kind of any town service. It's almost that broad. Whereas under the first set of regulations, it was very restrictive. And I know, because we went through the gymnastics of that. And then they changed the regulations, so.
Let's say if, if you two, since you worked on it in the past and you're closer to it, that, the details.
Yeah.
But if the town attorney's also gonna look at it, I'm sure you bounce.
That was one of the things, we always agreed that Town Attorney would give a thumbs up before, even though it was approved at the.
At that level.
Every level before, we would approve it.
But their, their review is free. His isn't, so.
Yeah, but here again, if I bring it up, something, something like this, what, if we brought up a couple of things. I, at my bi-weekly meeting with Town Attorney, I could have Tracy probably say yes to that sitting right there. So that's all part of that one feat.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't need a two-page opinion paper that would take a little bit longer. Yeah, I, I don't need a two-page opinion paper, that would take a little bit longer and be a lot more expensive.
And then Ann here did have a question on the total amount.
Yeah, so what's the amount that we're looking at, at this, I guess I just get a little-
And does it, yeah, and does it include that, that five thousand unappropriated, do you remember that, that little?
I got you, I'll walk us through down, walk us through everything.
Okay, thank you.
So, total ARPA budget was five million, four hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. The town approved five million, four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars, the difference of five thousand, two hundred and six dollars, real, real odd amount, but that's what they, that's what they left there.
Right.
Um, so, we've, since those projects were approved, fifty-three thousand rolled back into available funds. We spent seven thousand on the Grant Street ladder.
Oh, that's right, I forgot about that.
Yep, yep, gotta pay, pay the piper there.
Yep.
Um, so that gives us fifty-one, eight forty-eight, right? So, I mean, we still have two point eight million dollars of projects. Two point eight million of unspent funds, right? And there's a million, million dollars of, um, encumbrances as well on top of that, I believe, eight, eight hundred and thirty thousand encumbrances, yet to spend two and a quarter million, or two twenty-five.
Because there's a couple of things in there for Parks and Rec, uh, you know, playgrounds and so forth, and Jerry has asked, he goes, hey, it's my first year, and Yajai, if you need a little time, we're good with that, if he wants to retool that, but, you know, did we want to consider, like, we have, I think, a total of seventy-five thousand dollars, if you total it to, for emergency contingency, uh, emergency management pandemic needs? You know, I, I hate to say anything, but, you know, maybe we don't need all of that, we can probably use some of that, at least some, and I, our contingency for attorney fees is not nearly going to be what it is now. But here again, we'd always want to leave something in that, so.
So we've spent forty-seven hundred for attorney fees, so there's just under eighteen thousand, nine eighty for, for the attorney ones, and then there's also the contingency at the bottom for forty-three.
Yeah.
And that's unspent, so.
So, so I, yeah, I think we've got some areas that, you know, we could, and here again, you know, I don't want to, you know, we could always wait until next year, but, you know, the quicker, you know, this is a real challenging year, if we could identify the needs and we have the resources to avoid having to put it in a, in a very tough budget year, I think that's something we should consider.
So, I guess my question is, what is the bottom line that we're considering?
Well, I would consider the fifty-one thousand, and, uh, you know-
Okay, eight forty-eight?
Yeah, and then probably, you know, there's eighteen thousand dollars left in the eighteen thousand nine in, in town attorney, I would say, consider maybe leaving eighty-nine hundred in that is a good amount, and then for the seventy-five, I would consider maybe taking thirty-five out of that and leaving it at forty, so we'd still have forty thousand dollars there as a cushion going forward, so, that's, that's the numbers, I, I was just thinking about, and see what we, we could do to help offset, you know, out-of-pocket expenses, you know, for those one-time expenditures.
Okay, just so I, yeah, thank you.
Okay, no, it's a good point.
What do you say about the ADA?
Hundred thousand dollar range?
That you did, you would prefer not to put any of this money into-
Well, I, because the ADA, I think we're planning on putting that in a bonding package, is, I think there's a hundred and seventy-five for this year, and then there'll be a follow-up one for the, for next year as well.
Okay.
But I could, I could see what some of those projects would, would come out to, I mean, the, the lift elevator, I assure you, that's going to more than expend a lot of that. The bathrooms are going to be extremely, are going to more than exceed that, but, you know, as far as some things such as the counters and stuff like that, we might be able to look at that.
I think it would be a good idea to get a start on it, there's a lot of pieces to that, if we have the money, some of the immediate things, and also, uh, from things that we wanted to do at the time of COVID, I'm not sure that we finished all of those lists. I was, uh, at the library today, and I noticed that they do not have the automatic faucets in there, you still have to manually operate those, they aren't, you know, put your hand underneath it, so I'm wondering if we might go back and look at some of those things that we were supposed to do that didn't get finished, if we ran out of money.
Did they ask for it, we not give it to them?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Was that, yeah.
What was that? Well, we used, we spent some money, quite a bit of money for, for, um-
There's a conference room.
For Zoom meeting space.
Yes, yes. Yeah, for things to, um, you know, prevent the, the spread of additional COVID, COVID genes, or try to hold off on that. One of the things we, we're to have touchless faucets in, uh, the bathrooms, uh, there were some other things on that list.
I don't think that was approved. I don't think that was approved, because I think that, that, if, if my recollection serves me, I think it was because they were going to be doing a renovation of, of the library anyway. I think that was it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't see it, I haven't seen any of that.
Yeah, yeah, that wasn't, um-
We, they have new automatic doors, or glass doors for the meeting room, I think.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
And they, they were great, by the way, too.
Yeah, good, good, they just came, just came.
Yeah.
Just, uh, so if I take away the eighty-nine hundred dollars, so we take ten thousand out of that attorney fees account, um, so it's fifty-one, eight forty-eight, plus the ten thousand, plus the forty-three thousand for contingency, uh, that gives us one oh five, almost even, so a hundred and five thousand there. And then just to say, if, if, uh-
Very quickly.
If this bleeds into the next conversation of the, the budget update, we really can get creative there in the ending part of that conversation, so it'll wrap, it'll tie into this.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, all right, that's what I was trying to get at, the bottom line.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
Because we can tran, so, we can transfer money out of this year into the capital accounts, right? So next year, we don't have to do that transfer. So there's, uh, some little accounting maneuvers we can do to help the budget.
Okay, anything else on that?
Okay, that's good.
Okay, thank you so much, uh, now it gives us some marching orders to come forward for the next meeting. Moving on, uh, DOT project forty-four, one fifty-six, uh, which is Route one sixty-one, exit seventy-four, um, I sent an email out, and then, uh, I also forwarded the PowerPoint presentation, as the fellow, this is a major project, they said, most DOT engineers won't see a project of this magnitude in their careers. Uh, he said, this is on a scale similar to the Pearl Harbor Bridge, that took eight years, we won't take eight years, uh, but, you know, quite a bit, it's a hundred and forty-eight million dollars, and, um, the first year is pretty much going to be confined to Route one sixty-one, um, uh, I think there might already be some, uh, surveyor flags and, uh, ribbons out there because they're doing that, and then within the next couple of weeks, they'll actually start moving telephone poles, then when they have to get into actually digging up the underground utilities, which is water, sewer, and gas, natural gas, um, at night, they'll fill it back in, but there'll be times when at night people will be driving over gravel. It's supposed to be nine to three, there's already going to be talk about adjusting that a little bit, because it does cause a problem with buses at the high schools, so, um, we had that meeting with DOT and the project engineers and the, uh, that last week, uh, the superintendent was here, so we made sure they have, uh, the idea of what's going on, but it's going to be during the day. One of the questions asked of the police chief is, uh, I, do you have enough police? He says, no, I don't, that's why they're going to be working with mutual assistance from Waterford and Monville coming down here. Now, that won't be any cost to us, it's that mutual assistance, all the pay comes out of the, uh, out of the contingency and the project contingency, which is two million dollars for traffic control, so it's going to be quite an extensive project, uh, there. They said the, and what it'll be is, it'll be eleven-foot lanes, uh, on one sixty-one from basically Industrial Park Road to one sixty-one, uh, then there'll be a four, a five-foot, uh, shoulder area, then the four-foot, uh, like island between that, and five-foot sidewalks, the sidewalks will not be intermittent, they'll be all the way down, uh, the, and one of the things that have been mentioned is, early on, that ninety-five, Alex, you were at the meeting too, ninety-five may have to close at certain times, they've decided, not a good idea, even at night, that's not a good idea, so that will always be open, and we've asked for, you know, can they have some signage on the highway in the summer, like, you know, please, you know, don't use local roads, major construction areas, you know, won't help you out if you get off, so that's about, you can't stop it, you know, you can't stop people from getting off the highway, because they might get off for a variety of reasons, even if they don't live in town, but, uh, you know, warn them that it won't be any better doing that. The ninety-five part is really interesting, what else, if you're going south on ninety-five now, when you want to get off at exit seventy-four, you all of a sudden, you have about a fifty-foot area to get into the show, into the exit ramp and get off, that's going to be roughly three-quarters of a mile, you'll have the auxiliary lane, you'll be able to get on your exit, the entrance by seventy-five, and have plenty of area to get off, and it'll be a nice wide area. When you get on ninety-five south from exit seventy-four, it'll be a little, the location will be different, and, uh, it'll be twen, ten times the acceleration length than you have now to get on ninety-five heading. And they're also going to ra, raise the road in certain areas, because you have that big dip coming down ninety-five, if you're coming from exit seventy-three to seventy-four, they're going to raise that fourteen feet, which is apparently unheard of, but they're doing it, uh, which will make it a little easier on the climb and so forth like that, and coming down. It's really, I, I do have a, a picture back here.
How are they not going to shut the road down? They're going to add fourteen feet of dirt.
I, I, they'll figure it out.
Yeah, they're just going to do a couple lanes at a time.
Yeah, if you want to look at it, I've got it right here, this will be on the website, it'd be hard to show up now, because I can't really display it, but, um-
That's included in our package.
Yeah, yeah, oh, it wasn't a package, yeah, that's right, it was, yeah, and DOT, and they, what, once the, they estimate the website will be up and running in the middle of next month, and if you go on that, if, you know, if someone, you know, something jumps up and dents their car, a nail flattens their tire, they'll have a, an actual link to go on there to file the complaint, and it'll be taken care of from there. They're going to have their offices at Latimer Brook Commons, right where the vet is, and the eye doc, eye doctor and the, uh, P T place there, and they'll be running basically from, uh, all day and all night, because the work on ninety-five will be from eight at night till five in the morning. So it's going to be a very busy four and a half years, but the first, this year is going to be mainly, uh, Route one sixty-one, and they're going to try and give us two-week heads up as to what's going to close when, but it's going to be one lane closed, they can close one lane in each direction during that period during the day, so, um, my son lives on Smith Street, I might live with him for a while, because, because several of us, and you have, we have to come down that way, so it's, yeah, and, you know-
On the alternative.
And here again, we have heard from some of the people on Society Road and Dean Road, that the people that live in town are going to know where to go.
Yes.
Going up Lover's Lane and so forth like that, yeah, and the chief is aware of that too, and knows to put the speed calming signs probably in those areas, so, it's been, the nice thing is that they've given us plenty of heads up on this, and, and they are really willing to work with us, uh, and it gives us enough time to work up a plan as well. Alex, you were at that meeting, is there anything else you can think of? Okay.
You know, I mean, it is substantial engineering, it's going to be a big upgrade.
Oh, yeah, yes.
It's the state that's paying for this?
Yeah, we, yeah, we're not paying, no.
It's double our operating money.
No, yeah.
It's only a hundred and forty-eight million dollars.
Yeah, I'm just making sure.
Yeah.
Couldn't afford it.
It's just, it's, you know, and here again, they said, unfortunately, they're updating nineteen-sixties technology now, you know, and, you know, unfortunately, that's the case too, because, you know, every time you go down that bridge, if someone's walking underneath it or something like that, I guess so.
Kevin, will there, will there be, um, a public info session in coming-
We're, we, we mentioned that at the meeting, we haven't, they haven't gotten back to us yet, Bob Obi, who's the, uh, he's a retired engineer with the state, and he's basically the project manager, um, from, you know, not the state, but, uh, for the company, and we're trying to work out something, and, you know, and, and some of the, I, I put the, uh, we, we have the PowerPoint presentation on our town website, we took out some of the photos that show the fourteen-foot elevation, because if you look at that, it's, you know, our engineer at the end of the table here, or Alex, oh, they know exactly what that's about, the rest of us, oops, yeah, but, uh, you know, I just appreciate the states reaching out to us and keeping us really well informed on this, so, if there's nothing else, we have a few-
Just, just, two questions, is, are they doing something with access to cash lumber?
Oh, yeah, okay, uh, basically, there's an, you will no longer be able to access it off of one sixty-one.
Okay.
There's an access road just south of that, you can see.
Yeah.
The entrance into True Value will be from that access road, so you will not have to try to make that jump out into the highway.
Oh, context.
Yeah, they've done that really well.
And, and the pool shot treats?
Pool shot, you can see, it's going to go around the, the pool shot, what they really wanted to do is extend the entrances and exits off of ninety-five, because that has a good job of decreasing congestion, they said, because you spread, spread it out, and if you'll notice, coming off of ninety-five northbound, there'll be two left turn lanes, which is the, and it'll exit you off right in front of Burger King, stopping, Starbucks stays there, that's not going to be affected, and you see the, on the drawing on the, the commuter lot.
Yeah, I noticed the commuter lot went to the middle.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Moving on, we have a few people who have, uh, we had a few vacancies on some commissions, and we've had three people indicate their interest, uh, the first one we'll talk about is Water and Sewer, this will be to fill the resignation of Joe Mingo a couple of months ago, Kenny Roberts, uh, who lives in town currently, he's a member of the Youth Services Commission, and he's been very active in town for a long time, and he's indicated an interest, he works for River Source and has a good background that would be helpful to that, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Move to appoint Kevin, Kenneth Roberts, two Rockwell Street, Niantic, Connecticut, who serves as a member of the Water and Sewer Commission for the town of East Line with a term to expire on January five, twenty twenty-six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carrie unanimously. And then Conrad Seifert, who is Beth Hogan's husband, and after she passed, he indicated to Ann, and, and to me, that he would like to serve, uh, take her place on the Pension Committee, uh, Beth is a very valuable member to that, I'm sure he will too, so, if you'd like to move that.
Move to appoint Conrad Seifert, ten Wildwood Drive, Niantic, Connecticut, who serves as a member of the Pension Committee for the town of East Line with a term to expire on January eight, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, it carries unanimously. And last is Nick Menipace, who's moved to town a few years ago, and has now become very active, is indicating, desire to join the Historic Properties Commission.
Okay. Move to appoint Nicholas Menipace of thirty-eight Hope Street, Unit ninety-seven, Niantic, Connecticut, to serve as an alternate member of the Historic Properties Commission for the town of East Line with a term to expire on January eight, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, it carries unanimously, and thank them for their, uh, desire to serve and help out the town, to, and, and I put in the thing too, we did make sure that this is not, there's no problem with minority representation with any of these appointments. Moving on, Kevin, a little bit of an update on our budget, which I really enjoyed it today, too, it's, at the end of the day, it was some really good news.
All right, so, um, just want to start out with a fun little fact about East Line that I learned, uh, last week, um, so John Birmingham, one of the Board of Finance members, brought into my office, uh, a financial statement from nineteen twelve, so it is one hundred and eleven years old.
Wow.
Do you know how much revenue the town brought in in nineteen twelve? Any guesses? Twenty-one thousand dollars.
What was the annual budget?
So, you ready for that? Twenty-one thousand. Uh, it was, it was a little less than that.
And John was on the board then?
I don't know how we got a copy of it.
Somebody, I knew that you should say that.
And, uh, and I thought one interesting, uh, one thing was, uh, the town paid for fox pelts and beaver pelts and things like that, uh, seven dollars a whack. So twenty-one thousand on our budget, we're giving seven dollars out for every pelt that someone brings in. Quite a bit of money. And there was a health report in the back, and it talked about, uh, it was just real, it's a really cool read. There's also one in the, uh, town clerk's office. So if you, you have a few minutes, take a look at that.
Unfortunately, it's probably some unknown thing in the, some regulation. It says if anybody comes in now with a pelt, we're gonna have to pay them.
So, um, do you know, so this is the fun factor I thought was pretty interesting. Do you know how we get from a twenty-one thousand dollar budget in nineteen-twelve to an eighty million dollar budget in twenty-twenty-three? The annual growth rate? Don't start, Dan, uh, Bill. Um, it is seven point seven percent year after year for one hundred and twelve years of growth.
Oh, wow.
A seven point seven continual annual, a compound annual growth rate, seven point seven year over year on top of something. So I thought that was pretty impressive. That's not to say people's taxes went up by that because of the growth and everything, but I thought that was a, a pretty interesting little fun fact before we jumped into the good news. So, um, like Kevin said, he's got a smile on his face today, um, because we have, uh, some good news here when we talk, when we talk about revenues as well as expenses. So on the revenue side, tax collections. To date, we've collected sixty-four million, four hundred dollars, almost to the penny, a couple hundred dollars off. It's not written on here. It's just, uh, in my head, written on my paper. So, the budget was sixty-five million, sixty-nine thousand dollars and six bucks. We have collected so far ninety-eight point nine-nine percent of the taxes. I'm projecting we're gonna collect one hundred and one point six percent. And you're asking, how can you collect over a hundred percent of the taxes? We have motor vehicle supplemental. Do you remember the last meeting we had for selectmen? It's about five hundred thousand dollars of additional, um, taxes for people who bought their vehicles after October first. You don't get a free ride the whole year. You still get, you get backfilled. So, that's an extra five hundred thousand dollars.
Quick question, sorry. The Board of Assessment Appeals met the other day on, um, issues about taxes. Does that impact...
He's got that information. Don't worry.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So, no, I have that in there as well.
Okay.
That went really well for our behalf, too.
It's, um, it did not, it didn't, I, uh, I have the paper in my office. I think it went down a hundred fifty thousand dollars on a two-point-eight billion dollar grant list. I'll take a hundred fifty grand. You can have it. Um, okay. Where was I?
Sorry.
The five hundred thousand extra.
So, yeah, so just note, next year, the revenue for the tax collections is not gonna look as nice, because we are budgeting for this, this hidden, you know, motor vehicle supplemental that's not in the budget now, right? That's why this is a million dollars over, because there's actually a whole second revenue stream in there, that motor vehicle supplemental. Next year, we're accounting for that. So next year, when we do the budget for twenty-five, I'm not gonna be able to find half a million dollars, you know, baked in the budget, because I've really done a, a deep dive here, so. Um, and then, you know, with tax collections, the prior-year interest and then also, uh, prior-year taxes collected, um, is trending lower. Um, and that was because a couple of years ago, we had a tax sale.
Last year.
Oh, last year. So you didn't, if you had back taxes, we got them. So it's, it's, it, that trends lower this year. There's not as much back taxes to collect, okay? You've heard me say this before, the musical revenue sharing grant, uh, it's five hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars we did not budget for. We received that in. That's also a nice windfall. Uh, the interest earnings, um, on our money that, uh, we invest, um, that's on the next slide. Uh, and that's trending about four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the year. We budgeted twenty thousand dollars. And then, um, so there's the two items that I'm, I'm not quite sure about. Do a little more digging. The Pequot grant, it looks like we budgeted two-seventy. It looks like we're only getting about sixty-seven percent of that. Um, so I, I, I have to go onto the State of Connecticut website and just do some digging there. Um, and then mooring permit fees. Um, hopefully in the next month or two, I'll come to you and ask for, um, we're gonna create a special revenue account for the mooring, um, and the harbor management, everything like that. So with the revenues they bring in, they can use it for harbor management activities, maintaining the harbor, and every, everything else with that. All right, I think that's it for that revenue slide. Next up is the interest income projection. So, um, I haven't updated this since, um, Jan- the first of January, um, but the numbers still hold true. I projected four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. I think I'm trending, this was a little high. I think I'm at like four twenty-five. So, but that's pretty good for a projection. So, um, yeah, we're collecting a lot of, uh, in interest. Okay. Next, on the expenditure side. All right. So, these, so we have some accounts over budget. We've talked about this before. I don't know what's going on with that finance office. Registrar primary referendums, they're running a little high. We know about that. Um, legal expenses, we're monitoring that. And then, like I said, the finance office, I'm having the, the three ladies in my office work some overtime, help us catch up. So, and then miscellaneous supplies, those budget workbooks, inflation hit the finance office pretty hard. That, those books are a thousand dollars. Um, they're big dollars. The three-hole punch paper, we probably used ten, twelve reams of it. Um, the books themselves are like twenty bucks a piece or something. So it, uh, it added up, and it wasn't just the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, the two recording secretaries, myself. There was a lot of, a lot of paper and books there.
You normally turn the books in. You shouldn't have to buy them every year.
Bring your book in. I'll shred the pages and keep the, the tablets and the tabs and everything, but, um, if you'd like, you can turn it back in and save it out of finder.
We do every year. I think, I thought everybody does.
I don't know if everybody does.
I think there's a...
Some of those books have new tabs and some don't.
I think there's a concerted effort. I mean, I know the...
It's a fifty-fifty.
I know the ones in, in the first selectmen's office are always there, because they always, you know, once, so they can go back a few years.
You need one hard copy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't need them in my basin. You can have them.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Bring them on in. We'll take that.
I do.
We'll recycle here. We'll recycle.
Okay.
All right. And, uh, and just so everyone know here, um, some, um, some salary accounts are over. I know that. I have not done the salary contingency, uh, transfer yet. I have it calculated already, so I've brought it to you, and the Board of Finance actually do the transfer. That'll be in the next meeting, um, when we, when we do that. So, accounts under budget. These are the accounts that are, are really giving us a lot of, uh, some cushion here. Fuel contingency. I believe that account has two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars in it, two-twenty. Twenty-twenty-three general obligation bonds. I have to do a little more research, because that account appears to have two hundred thousand dollars in it. So whether that, there was a, you know, maybe a, um, a best guesstimate last year, and then we got a more refined number. So I've gotta just make sure everything's been posted. You know what I mean? Make sure all the bills are posted. Retirement liability, that account as well, um, I believe it had three hundred and seventy-three thousand or three hundred and twenty-three thousand. That account is trending in the right direction. We, we're gonna spend about a hundred fifty thousand out of that. Pension, um, you know, so every year, I think there's about seventy-five thousand dollars in there. They weren't quite sure what the, the final pension contribution was gonna be, so a little wiggle room there. Salary contingency of, I believe it's three hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Let's get it right here. And I believe there was seventy-five thousand in that line as well. So, um, any details you want, I can get them, but high level, so, three-quarters of a million dollars in the right direction. There's some areas, uh, we can discuss. So, the revenues, um, I'm projecting two hundred and ninety-one thousand, okay? Part of this projection is me not bringing in an operating transfer from the Capital Projects Fund of three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. Okay, so I'm leaving that off. If I brought that in, that'd be more of a windfall for the general fund, but I don't, I haven't reconciled the Capital Projects Fund to make sure the fund balance of the Capital Projects Fund is adequate for all of the projects yet to spend. I don't think we should move that money. Now, talking about the use of the ARPA money, okay? As we just discussed, expenses are trending half a million dollars in the right direction, expenses about three hundred thousand in the right direction. I can move the half a million dollars in the end, at the end of June, into the Ca- Capital Non-Recurring Fund. We do not have to spend the money next year to fund the cash capital projects, because we moved it from this year, right? That would affect fund balance, right? Because there would, there would be, it would be almost a, a wash, right? So pull up, um, everyone's got a handout of the fund balance. I believe it's next slide as well. There it is.
Yeah.
I printed it out, so you can see it. Remember those comments? So, um, so, you know, if we took away the four hundred and forty-four thousand here, the current year on, effect on fund balance, you know, you can see right now, if we left the money there, we're just a hair under fifteen percent. Fourteen point nine-six, okay? So I guess the question becomes, do we sacrifice fund balance this year, right, and then save tax dollars for next year? So, you know, it's balancing act. There's a lot of questions here. It's, it's really like, you know, creative accounting a little bit. So that's just, you know, something I'm grappling with right now, you know, internally in the office thing. Okay, what number can I, you know, tell Kevin over here, hey, maybe we can move of that, um, what was the balance? Of the five, you know, close to five hundred thousand of expenses we haven't spent, do we move a quarter of a million dollars over into the CNRE fund? So next year, we do not have to spend that two hundred and fifty thousand out of that, right? So, that's one thing to think about. Now, budgeted this year is an operating transfer out of the Capital Projects Fund that was, I just talked about earlier for the three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, right? Cash capital in the, the, the budget we just put together was about six hundred thousand dollars, okay? I'm not transferring, we're, we're not, we're looking not to transfer the three hundred and eighty-seven thousand. So we can fund that six hundred thousand dollars, three eighty-seven in the current budget, right? And then we transfer the remainder, three eighty-seven minus six hundred, give me two hundred and thirteen thousand?
Yeah.
Two hundred and thirteen? So we can transfer two hundred and thirteen thousand, and we don't have to spend cash capital next year, right? Because we paid for it this year with additional revenues. So, something to think about.
We've been talking about, because...
I threw a lot at you.
No, and, and this is where, you know, normally this is for the Board of Finance, but I figured we need to be as, 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 you know, with the back. It, it does help us out a lot and, you know, moving forward, too, because, um, you know, because, you know, we've all seen what the budget looks like right now. And any way we can help defray the cost and the impact onto the taxpayers is some, you know, and, you know, I probably go to Kevin's office several times a day, and he comes into mind several times a day, because just, you know, trying to figure out any way to, to, you know, identify some additional source of revenue, some, you know, places where we haven't spent money this year. We don't, we're not gonna mention storm overtime, because we did that and then a storm hit, so then we, we sidetracked one here, so we're keeping quiet about that, so.
Um, and then, uh, the other thing here for this budget, which I think is pretty impressive. Last year, you budgeted a one-point-three million dollar use of fund balance. We're not touching it, all right? So if we return, you know, close to six, seven hundred thousand, and we did not use that one-point-three million, we just funded the two million dollar use of fund balance in next year, right? So there's, I know the budget, the numbers were high, and, you know, they were a little shocking, but the, the health of this budget year is gonna help us next year. So even though, you know, these numbers say, oh, my God, we have a lot of money here to spend, these are saving us for next year. This is, this, you know, are saving grace for next year's budget.
But what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to see what it's gonna do the year after that, right? If we take expenses, if, if the expenses grew and they're expected to continue there, then that's okay for the budget to rise up.
You have a gap.
That's okay. Yeah, if it's a, if it's a windfall this year, then we're gonna offset the eight-point, whatever, yeah. And then we get used to that, so we get comfortable at that level, and it's not there next year.
It's not there that one year.
Then it, and that's why I'm keeping, treating this kind of like capital, where it's a one-time deal, you know, it's not, it's not into the day-to-day kind of, you know, we're gonna, expenses all the time. It's just a steady expense, or new revenue stream, and we got this three hundred thousand that's gonna be there every year, and, so, going towards capital projects.
And I cover that five hundred thousand, the motor vehicle supplemental, every year, I mean, since that's been going on over, you know, decades, that's been baked into that current year tax collection number. So every year, that's, you know, in good years, it's five hundred thousand dollars, right? That, that number wasn't included in the budget. I am now identifying that. So if, and in a given year, if you were looked at that current year tax collection, and if it was hovering around half a million dollars over, it's a zero now going forward.
Okay.
But that didn't, that, that didn't change the amount of revenue. That just changed the way we account for it.
Yeah.
I mean, there's still the same amount of money coming in.
Yeah, yeah.
And we can't spend more, because it's, yeah, it's...
But budgetary-wise, we weren't budgeting that, right? Now we're budgeting it, so.
Right, right, right.
You know?
That's my only concern, is that the short-term and long-term, making sure that they're aligned, that we don't take a short-term, um, expense or savings and apply it to a long-term, you know, offset that, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, and similar to that, the use of bond premiums, this current year, we have five hundred thousand in there. We still have, I think it's three sixty-five, if the number off the top of my head, three thirty-five, three sixty-five, over three hundred thousand additional to that of bond premiums. So next year, you know, like you said, the short, you know, a one-time revenue source is great for this year's budget. What happens next year when you don't have that? So, you know, next year, we can kind of wind down to the three fifty or three sixty-five, whatever it is. Hopefully, you know, that bond will get some also bond premium, just kind of, you know, draw that down without, you know, just hitting the tax base.
That's what I was trying to see through this whole presentation, is what's long-term or what's short-term, and, and are we, are we allowing ourselves to grow the budget with this kind of fake, kind of...
We had that exact conversation, too. I mean, you, you can't keep wait, waiting, oh, don't worry, we'll have the revenue to take care of this next year. You know, you have to plan otherwise. I mean, because as we can see, like, we'll still probably get some more additional revenue from the state, uh, I think as time goes on.
And part of the question is how much of the growth in the budget this year is normal, and how much of it's this one-time freaky year? And it's like, uh...
And like stationary pressures as opposed to...
Yeah, yeah. And paying for some of the ills of past years, where we, you know, we're really tight with our budgets, and this year, it's just like, you know what? We have to get the police. We have to get the dispatcher. We have to get the, you know, I mean, there's some things just, it's the perfect storm this year.
Yeah, we've waited, we've waited on many, many items.
Yeah, that's right. So that's, that's why you get so much fun all day. You get to figure out how all these Tetris pieces come together.
Yeah. A lot of pieces in this puzzle. So, but I think, uh, I hate those on the left side. That was fun, Bill. So fourteen point nine-six we're looking at.
Okay.
So...
Oh, I liked the way you just did. I think you got all your questions already, so.
Play with your transitions.
Kevin, thank you for, for doing, I mean, not that you're dealing with a, a new payroll system, the budget, and everything else. Thank you, Ben, dental work yesterday.
And dental work, which is the worst part of the whole thing.
You've got the kidney stone. The dental work, listen, I said to the dentist yesterday during surgery, uh, you know, she's like scraping my mouth, and, um, she said, oh, do you need more, uh, you know, more, um, medication? I said, man, I just got done having a kidney stone. You could rip this tooth out, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't, you know, be the same, so.
All right, all right, thank you, Kevin.
Having a good year.
Yeah.
Hope it's better.
Okay, moving on, we've already done the EV charging station. Just for a quick update on charter revision, they're gonna, they've really been making some really, really good progress. They're gonna formulate, uh, I was at their last meeting, they're gonna, uh, try and come back to us no later than April, uh, and with, with their recommendations and so forth like that. Couple of things they have decided on are, and, and this isn't for sure, but they seem to be, uh, moving towards, uh, an administrative hire for both the, uh, tax collector and the town clerk's positions. They also, uh, are looking at possibly recommending four-year terms for the boards of selectmen and first selectmen. And if you get appointed to a vacancy in an elective office, you would fill it for the remainder of the term, not just for the next general election. And they are, they're working up something, they feel strongly about the, uh, referendum staying in there, because they said if we don't, i- in some petitions, then you have to identify the funding. It's, it's an unanticipated, uh, uh, increase in cost. So that may, I, I understood that point. And for, uh, you know, the grants, they're gonna work that out, but as far as raising the dollar threshold, rather than identify a specific dollar, they would tie it into the, uh, basically a percentage of the town budget. Uh, you know, so, as, as the town budget increases, so does the threshold for a town meeting. Yeah, and, so, you know, so it would slowly increase over time, so you don't have to, you know, wait for eight or ten years. So that's where they are, so that's, that's where they're... But Mark Salerno's, uh, and, and the whole group has had a really, really good job. Last thing, uh, on, for just discussion, Dominion Building update. We had a, we met with the, uh, I met a meeting with the Yale Sharet people, and, uh, with the theater, the cinema's now becoming, gonna be live, uh, theater a few times a year, and then possibly a weekend, one weekend of, uh, you know, vintage movies during the course of the year and so forth like that. They said it almost really enters in that question of not making the, the piece of property across the street part of that atmosphere you wanna create down there. So they're gonna, uh, come up with a conceptual, or some conceptual, uh, conceptual drawings of what it could look like, uh, and, you know, then bring it forward to here. And I, what I'd love to do is probably in April, maybe have a, a presentation to the town saying, you know, these are our options with, uh, the Dominion Building. Give it back, which, then it's a done deal, they, and then we have not nearly as much control. And if we do keep it, what's the process and, and how we do it? There's, uh, an opening right now for Brownfield Grants. I've, we've asked Dominion for permission to, we can get that grant if they allow us to do the tests on the property, uh, while they're still owning it. So if they say yes to that, uh, the, that, that grant will be all set and ready to go, so. But that's where we stand. It looks like, you know, the conception was to have some type of facility across the street, where you can have restaurants, uh, bathrooms, but possibly a building that is leased by someone else, and has to maintain a bathroom, so it doesn't fall onto the town to do that. And then back of the overlook, we'd be getting closer to the overlook for the bay, and by train tracks, like an elevated, uh, uh, viewing area that would be big to where you could have events up there. So they have some ideas, so, uh, we'll bring those to the town and see, uh, you know, as soon as I get a little bit more information and you get the, the drawings, I think we'll be in a better shape. They gave me a drawing of what it, what one would look like, and it looked like a prison. I said, and they said, no, no, that's just them doing it. They said they'll do something much better.
So the two things they're looking at is giving it back or turning it into a town property that we're gonna lease?
No, no. We, if, what we... No, no, if, what we could do is we could build this, you know, here again, that's one of the options. We could possibly build a facility there and lease it to somebody who could put in a restaurant or something like that. And, you know, they would be responsible for maintaining the bathrooms and so forth like that, that would be open to the public. You know, but those are just some of the possibilities. And they're going to come back with some options and recommendations for us. Because they do, because they're going to talk about some other areas where this has happened and so forth. One other thing too, that the Yale Sharet study identified, which is a little bit outside of just the Dominion Building, is directing people to park on Main Street is a problem. People that don't know the town really don't know where to park, and they said there's too many curb cuts. You know, you, you, there's cars coming in and out on both sides of Debs, on the other side of, on both sides of the liquor store, all over. They said that's inviting disaster for pedestrians and car accidents. And so they're talking, you know, that'll be a presentation we get at some point in time too, about some recommendations to improve that there. But that's it, so that's this and that too, so. Nothing else here, we'll move on to executive official reports. Roseanne?
I'm all set.
Okay, Dan?
Looking tonight.
Good, Ann?
Yes, let's see, I attended a Board of Trustees' library, and just a couple of items. There was, there's under review the unattended child policy of the, of the library. They will be, they will use their, their council to review the policy in total, but for now, the board has changed the unattended age from 10 to 12. Some incidents having happened, and, and also this aligns apparently with certain provisions in the state statutes and other related topics, so that, that transpired. I did get to see the new conference room glass door that was installed with the ARPA money in the room and so forth. It looks very good, they're just waiting on furniture and tech devices, but we, that owl camera that will come. So, again, with some ARPA funding, so that's exciting. And then on the 22nd of April, the East Line Library Foundation is sponsoring a presentation by Steve Katz, who was with the group Blood, Sweat &amp; Tears. And that's going to be at the high school on a, it's a Saturday, the 22nd of April, and it's free. And he will also do some performance too. So he's going to talk about his life, his book he's written, so kind of a fun thing. I have little cards for everyone, I'll just save the date card.
I've seen those around.
Yes, it's, it'll be a nice community event. But that's it for the library for now.
Okay, Ann?
I don't have anything to report.
Bill?
Plenty of building, we're both canceled.
Okay, I'll get to. Moving on, you could, we should see where Stonington defeated the ordinance regulating Airbnbs. It's been reported on a couple websites, our social media sites, that we had enacted an ordinance. We, we have not, so, you know, and I can understand how that can easily get confused. But no, the town has not taken any action on that too. We do get, not so much during the winter, but during the summer, we do get some, so, you know, we do probably need to look forward, but I think we try to do some lessons learned on where Stonington went. So, just to make sure people know, we did not enact an ordinance at all. This Saturday, at 10:00 AM on Hope Street, will be the start of the Oniantic 5K. It runs through the town, it's run by the Hartford, the ones that do the triathlon at the beach in the summer. Hartford Athletic Club, I got that wrong, but that organization, so it'll be there. And that'll be this, and also, building records. Right now, if you've been into our, anyone's been into our building zoning and planning office, there is reams and, there's a rainforest in there. There's so much. And what they'd like to do is start, as allowed by law, destroying, you know, designs, building, home designs and that too. If it's a, if it's a three-family house, you've got to keep those forever. But this is for individuals, after two years, you're allowed to destroy them. So they've asked permission to do that, I have no problem with them doing that. They're going to give, you know, on media and on the town website, they're going to give ample notice that, hey, as of, you know, July, July or August 1st, you know, if you, you can come in and make a copy of them, or come in and get them if you'd like, but they're going to start destroying because we just have such an abundance of things on there. There's, and obviously the things, the statutes are very clear on what you can destroy and what needs to maintain forever. The 29th of this month, there's going to be a handful of, this, March is the month of the woman. And the 29th at Rosenegger from 5:00 to 7:00, there's going to be a recognition of a few women in town who have, you know, done things above and beyond for the community and so forth like that. I know who they are, but I won't, you know, a couple of them, I know who's there, so I don't want to ruin the surprise in case they haven't been told yet. It's going to be a very nice event, so looking forward to that. Roseanne, you've always opposed a grant writer, correct? Anyway, I talked to Kevin.
It's not April Fool's.
Yeah, well, not yet. What I'd like to consider doing, and I'll bring back a formal, a formal request and that too, is hire a, a grant writer whose job is to basically, not much, 12 hours a week. I figured that person, you know, about $25 an hour, which would come out to about $15,000 a year. We can identify the money in the budget this year, and I think moving forward if we have to easily. But get someone in there who can dedicate themselves to writing grants. The company we use, helpful in a couple areas, but, you know, for $200 a month, you know, you, you get, you know, they just didn't have the resources to give us what we needed unless we invested a lot more money. This way, if there's a grant opportunity out there, and then the person can, you know, this is where if the person gets hired, then, you know, the administrative fee of the, the grant administration fee is a way they can supplement the income. But, you know, there's so many grants out there that, you know, we just, and to send it, for me to see a grant and send it to Joe Berga or to some, or to Jerry Locke, and like, that's not fair, they don't have the resources to do it. So, I think that's something we'll look at doing. I've talked to a couple people, if they, you know, if they think, you know, and they think it'd be a really good idea to look at hiring someone for that, so we'll bring something formal for the next meeting. Tomorrow morning from 7:00 to 9:00 at the police station, there is a farewell breakfast for Jim Levandowski, who after 32, 31 years with the police department is retiring. Not only is Jim a 31-year veteran of the police department, he also was a four-year veteran of the Air Force, has been a member of the Flanders Fire Department since 1991, twice serving as chief, also worked for DEEP and so forth like that, and many specialties, so we'll be saying goodbye to him. And then Friday at 2:00 at the Senior Center will be a little farewell ceremony for Kathy Wilson. She'll be retiring at the end of the month, so there's a little ceremony there at 2:00. Moving on, water and sewer. We had the public hearing on the proposed, for capacity only, for the Niantic Village at Dodge Pond. I'm not sure the name is right, or something. But it was a very good presentation by both the attorney for the developer and from Ben Norton, and our attorney on our side. Very good questions from the community, and you were there, very, very good questions. And that's coming to zoning, I think, tomorrow night? I know it's, yes, it's gone for, for the application. But, you know, one of the things that was realized, that we are really getting close to capacity, it's something we have to address, whether it's for this or another one, we just can't tell people, you know, no, can't, we don't have any room. So that's something that we're going to be looking at for there. Also, coming up, and they'll be voting on that capacity on the 28th, which you'll have to cover. The finance meeting for me that night is executive official, since I'll be here for this. And then Waters will be presenting their budget also at the next meeting as well. I think that covers pretty much everything. That's it, any questions? There's, communication's done, there's no public comment, selectmen's response. Just to respond, Mr. Harney spoke at the beginning of the meeting, and he did mention that the Hathaway property was the number one thing identified in the POCD. But the piece of property being offered now was not that same property. It was the Hathaway Farms, which was the entire thing. There's been 10 acres, basically, there's no longer any waterfront access if, you know, to the property that's being offered for sale. And the availability of property on Scott Road is very restricted too. And, you know, I won't get into any other of the comments made because that wouldn't be appropriate. I know as recently as today, Attorney Block and Attorney Novak talked, and we'll be moving forward there, so. That's all, I'll comment on that.
Thank you for making that distinction.
Okay, thank you, Roseanne. So, anyway, I think none. There's really no need for any executive session tonight because as I said, there's really nothing to report. We will by the next meeting, because I'll be meeting with Attorney Block next week.
For our next meeting, as it wasn't on the agenda tonight, for a discussion about the procedure with the Board of Education, but I feel that we need to confirm the deadlines that we need to keep in place to help us do the best job that we can. And I, I have reviewed the budget several times, and I just feel that a presentation of that length with that much detail for us to try to absorb in the amount of time that we are provided is not sufficient for us to do our best job.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know how the people feel.
Yeah, I certainly agree, Roseanne, and thanks for bringing that up. It's, it's, you know, we know it's well, it's 60, 66, 67, 67% plus of the budget. And it's a complex budget, it has, you know, many moving parts, there's multiple budgets within the budget, which alone, one could spend an afternoon just reading the Flanders budget and doing a little bit deeper dive. So, and I think too, in addition to having more time with that budget, more detail in that budget is absolutely necessary. When I sat on Board of Finance my first year in 2017, 2018, after that budget cycle, I wrote, I wrote a memo about certain ways that we could help improve the, the budget process. And one thing was, be more specific in the narrative. It will cut down on time, Q and A, there's just, there's no need to have this endless question and answer if it's clear in the narrative. And I think that's not too much to ask for, for any department as well as Board of Education. So in addition to your point about time, it's also, you know, it's also a matter of good explanation and with clarity. Thanks.
Thank you, any other comments?
Yeah, I guess I would say that I think during the pandemic that some of the timing got a little off, and I think that we need to dial it back and say, you know, we need to have the presentation with the Board of Education earlier.
Well, I know when I was, you know, it's been, 2011 was the last year I served, yeah, last, but 2000, on the Board of Ed, but the budget, we always adopted this, the budget at the end of February, so there would be plenty of time for it to be reviewed and that. So if there was some way to, they could expedite that a little, or move that back a little closer to that, I think it would make it easier on us going forward.
I recall it, end of January.
Yeah, that's it.
Last week, and, you know, I think it was that digression where the 18 FTE potential cut was made, and then there was multiple discussions within Board of Education Administration. But maybe you just need to take the straight path, here's the budget, and then, you know, suggestive, suggestive, you know, reductions come later. But that, that seemed to spend, there was a lot of time spent on that.
Any other comments?
It does seem since our responsibility for the Board of Ed budget is different than the rest of the budget, it's not exactly apples and oranges, but if we spend five nights, three hours a night, 15 total hours, hours, if that's what it was, I'm making up numbers, to look at 34% of the budget, you would think we would spend more than 30 minutes looking at 67.5% of the budget. So, I concur.
Okay, thank you, very important. Okay, any further comments? I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion, move to adjourn.
To a second.
You're looking at your sheet to see what you're supposed to say?
Okay, all those in favor?